This is being hosted by Citizens Outreach Group. We're part of an El Paso County volunteer organization and we're dispersed throughout the county as citizens. So, obviously, there's many that live within the city of Colorado Springs. I personally live in Peyton and we want to thank you for being here tonight. As we proceed on tonight, what we're going to do is allow each of the people up here to have an opportunity to speak, starting off with Commissioner Lathan and Mr. Bennett, City Council Bennett. And anyway, we'll let the presentations go through, then we'll get into a question-answer session. So, at this time, Commissioner Lathan, I'd like to let you open things up.
Thank you. Okay, we'll see if our -- it sounds like the sound is working fine. Thanks, folks, for taking some time to come on out and just, we wanted to have a very open discussion with a town hall meeting with both City Council and the Board of County Commissioners and the Mayor's Office. There's so much going on in the community that, and we meet so often together, that it's, we just felt that a joint town hall would be very beneficial. And so, thanks for taking some time and coming out. I want to just, we're going to kind of let everybody do introductions and talk about, well, first of all, do an introduction, who you are, what your district is, how long you've been in office, so that everybody knows who's here. And then, we're going to let everyone here kind of talk about maybe something that they're working on, something that's important, initiative, what have you. Just a little bit of an open format from the panel, and then we're going to have just an open Q&amp;A session from the audience. So, this is what we really like to do, which is open conversation back and forth, any topics that are of concern, anything that you've read about or have wondered about with some different initiatives that are going on. So, with that, we'll kind of start, let's start down here with, we'll start at the end, Commissioner Heisey, and work our way this way, or do you want to, let me have, we'll have, sorry, President of City Council introduce himself, and then everybody will introduce, and we'll go from there. Thanks.
I'm assuming I'm on. I guess I'm making a bad assumption, right? Okay, here we go. I'm Mur Bennett. I am an at-large member of City Council. I've been on City Council five years. Well, in April, it'll be five years. I think I have the longest tenure on City Council. And I am currently serving as President of City Council, and I think I'll go for, turn it over to Brett next.
Okay. Brett Waters, I'm the Deputy Chief of Staff for the city of Colorado Springs on behalf of Mayor Suthers and Chief of Staff Jeff Green, who's with us today. We want to thank you, and Commissioner, I don't know if you want me to state a few words more, or...
You know what? We'll just do introductions first, and then we'll kind of go from there.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Dennis Heisey, County Commissioner. Lived down in Fountain, so that means the south, and a lot of the east side of the county's mind. And I have the best group.
Oh, oh. Okay, well, that will be an issue to debate later on in the evening. I appreciate that, Commissioner Heisey. We'll deal with that later.
Just thought I'd lay it out there.
Okay. Very good. And we'll go down to Don.
I'm Don Knight. I'm Don Knight. I'm City Council District One. Like Dennis, we're number one for a reason, which is the northwest side of town, and been on since the three years in April.
Peggy Littleton, County Commissioner, District Five. I'm the City Commissioner. Every single one of the City Council members' seats touched my Commissioner District in some way, shape, or form, and so, it's a delight knowing all of them, working with them, and having the opportunity to collaborate on a lot of city and county issues together that affect my constituents. So, I've been a Commissioner since 2011.
Andy Pico, I'm a City Councilman for District Six, which is the northeast, kind of goes out halfway to Kansas. I also chair the Board of Utilities, and now I've picked up as well the Chair of Bikes Peak Area Council Governments.
And I'm Henry Yankowski, and I'm the County Administrator for El Paso County. It's not on?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it is.
You'll have to use your teacher voice.
Teacher voice.
There you go.
Again, I'm Henry Yankowski, and I'm the County Administrator, El Paso County.
And I should have mentioned it earlier, I am the District Two County Commissioner, Amy Lathan. I've been on the Board for eight years. I am currently the Chair of the Board. And so, let's start, Brett, why don't we start with you, with representing the Mayor's Office? And again, folks, we just really like an open format, so we're just going to kind of flow with it here, and so, anything that you'd like to share from the Mayor's Office?
Sure. A couple of things that, thanks again, Commissioner, and those who put this forum on. It's really a great opportunity to visit with you this evening. Again, on behalf of Chief of Staff and Mayor Suthers, there's a couple of priorities the Mayor had in coming to office, and not to take too much time, but one of those was what you see before you right now is relationships, a relationship with City Council and County Commissioners. And so, you see a lot of cohesion, both publicly and privately, with other elected officials in the region, in the area. So, I want you to know that it's happening, clearly happening. Tonight's a representation of that, but in many other avenues, I think Mur, to my left, would agree with me, and the Commissioners would as well. So, that has, we have a very strong relationship in that matter. The second is economic development. You are seeing, and will continue to see, job growth in the community, probably in Commissioner Heisey's district, close to the airport. You're seeing a lot of development in that area. You're also seeing a lot of other exciting opportunities, and will continue to see exciting opportunities. You probably saw the announcement of a cyber center that the Governor announced in the state of the state. That's exciting. So, we're seeing some exciting things in the area, in the region, that are collaborative, and I think you'll continue to see economic growth in those areas. And then, lastly, infrastructure is a clear priority for the Mayor. Clearly, the voters sent a strong message when they passed 2C, and you're going to see a lot of improvement in your driving condition in years to come. Also, clearly, stormwater is a clear priority for the Mayor, and has been working closely with El Paso County, or El Paso County, and also, City Council and Utilities Board on that issue. So, we're excited, we're optimistic, we're very hopeful for the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council President.
Sure. Well, let me, council has a lot of things going on, and if any of you are interested in running for City Council, let me give you an aha experience. I decided I was going to, after I retired, after a 40-year career of running for City Council. Well, I am on City Council. I'm also on the Board of Directors, past Chair of the Utilities Board. I also represent City Council, and am Vice Chair right now of the PPRTA. Also represent City Council on the Urban Renewal Board. I also represent City Council on the RBA Board. And there's some other responsibilities. Also, Chair of the Personnel Committee for Utilities, and also Chair of the Audit Committee for City Council. I tell you what I'm doing, all of my colleagues have the same type of schedule, so it's not just a City Council meeting that you're going to. It's consistent, but we're very busy. We're very, working very closely with the administration. As you heard, when it came to 2C and the roads were, we worked closely with that. The Council passed a resolution on stormwater before the Mayor picked that up, before he was even elected, he picked that up. We together put it into the budget for next year, and we're working in unity with Utilities as it relates to talking to our friends in the lower Arkansas Valley, and the Pueblo City Council, and the Pueblo County Commissioners. And that's kept us very busy, but we're speaking with one voice, and we have some issues that have to be addressed. We've had an RBA, I mean, EPA, thank you, EPA report that's come out that's not been favorable. We're going to have to address those issues. We are going to address those issues. We're going to have to do that together. And so, we're, those are things that we're working on with the Mayor. When it comes to 2C, Council approved yesterday the allocation of those funds. A lot of people thought it would just come in, but we still had, that wasn't a part of the budget because it hadn't been approved by the voters. And so, we had to go back, and yesterday, we approved that, for that allocation, and we'll start receiving those funds, well, within a few days. We'll start receiving the funds, because you receive them about a month after it happens. Councilor, Councilman Knight and I do serve on the Advisory Committee, and we take that very serious, whereas, it's a five-member committee that's working with the administration and the staff to make sure that those dollars are used in the most judicious and wise manner, and that that meets with the expectation of the voters. That's very critical to us as we move forward with that. Couple of things you may not be aware that we're dealing with, is if, four years ago, five years ago, actually, in November, when we had a change of governance, remember, we said we were going through the strong Mayor Form of Governance? That was great, we did that, but because of the ballot issues, that you can only have one subject on a ballot, there were a lot of issues that are in city code and in the city charter that are still worded in a manner that ties back to the old system, because we couldn't change them at that point. So, we now have a team with Council members, Councilmember Knight, Strand, Bagley, Don, is there one other?
No, that's it.
Is that it? Are working with the people of the administration. We decided less, as we address this, a lot of the things in the city code that could address these issues, so there's not conflicts in how we're dealing with those, can be done through city code. And that process has started, and we can deal with that as a council. When it comes to charter things, though, that has to go back to the voters. So, we're going to do that second. That'll probably be something that'll bore people to death, but it's critical for us to do that so that we become efficient and effective as we move forward. So, that's moving forward as well. And as you know, we do have a couple of items, one, dealing with marijuana clubs, and that's being addressed right now, and another one, dealing with grows in neighborhoods and things of that nature. And we have, Mr. Bagley is leading that task group that's working on that. There's a lot of work going on. We anticipate, we don't know what the results of the EPA evaluation that came out, we don't know what the end result of that is. So, everything we're doing now is to address the critical needs of the future, and to recognize that we may have future needs that are mandated to us in the future that we don't have control of. So, that's keeping us very busy. One other thing that I wanted you to be aware of that's going on, and you may be aware of this, but back in, I believe it was in 1984, Banning Lewis was annexed into the city. I'm going to use a term that I heard back in 1984, that if it was fully built out at that time, it would probably be equal or larger than the third-largest city in the nation, in the state. That's how huge that is out there. Well, obviously, that has not happened, but we're needing to address how we move forward. You know, that's been 35 years or so. Life has changed since that time, and we are, we have our attorneys, the city's attorneys, working on that. It is a land use issue, and it will come to council eventually for us to address that. And we're being briefed as those negotiations are taking place. But there's a lot going on, and one final thing I wanted to tell you about, and this has not, some of these things have never happened. When I came on council five years ago, City Council and the city and the County Commissioners had not met together in seven years at that time, seven or eight years. We meet quarterly now, just to talk, if nothing else. Usually, is to find ways that we can work more closely together and find reasonable solutions to common problems. Some other things that are happening, we meet on a quarterly basis with the RBA, because jobs are so critical to us. So, the Council and the RBA Regional Business Alliance, working closely together as we address how we can bring jobs to Colorado Springs, is very important, and we're doing that. But we're also meeting twice a year with the Pueblo City Council. We did something about a month ago that's, we don't think, there's nothing in recorded history that shows this has ever happened in the history of either city. The Colorado Springs City Council and the Denver City Council had a joint meeting. That's never happened before. And we had some aha experiences during that time, when we said, wow, we can learn so much from you. And they're saying, wow, you've addressed some things that are on our ticket that we can learn from. Maybe we ought to do this more often, and we're going to be doing that more often, because working in a collaborative mode is far more efficient, more effective. We've also, I said, that was the last one, but I've got one other thing. I am a politician, you know, I can keep talking. When it comes to item 2C, one of the things that we're going to be communicating, there'll be a website, there's already a website that you can find out where we're at, but, you know, the, there's the dollars that are coming in from 2C, but we're also, the majority of our capital work on the roads is going to be done through PPRTA funding. And in addition, we have some money that is used out of the budget that's addressed. We need a place where our citizens can see how all of those dollars are being used together, and the synergy that takes place. We're going to be dealing with potholes, and we're going to be dealing with rebuilding of a lot of our roads. The same time, we're going to be, if you saw in the paper today, addressing the West Colorado Avenue, no man's land, we call it the Avenue now and not no man's land. That's being done through PPRTA, and there's significant stormwater issues that are being addressed as a part of that, and it connects to the county, to Manitou, and to Colorado Springs. So, there's going to be a lot of synergy that's taking place. These, I told you of the meetings that we're doing together, those are going to become more and more important as we work to resolve these issues. And like I said, I could keep going, but I will stop.
You're doing great. You're doing just fine. Keep on going.
Well, my colleagues will pick me up, I'm sure.
They'll give you the hook. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And from the county's perspective, I suppose, you know, we're going to repeat ourselves a little bit here, but it's worth repeating, and that is this message that cannot be understated, which is the fact that we are working together. And it seems like an absolute no-brainer, well, of course, you're working together. I mean, good heavens, we're the most populous county in the state of Colorado. That depends on what day you ask Denver, right? But I think our last count, we were up a few citizens. And we have Colorado Springs here, we have eight municipalities in El Paso County, bless you. And we must work together in order to leverage the area. When we talk about economic development, if we're not, if we can't talk amongst ourselves right here in El Paso County, and all the things that are happening within El Paso County, whether they're structural, whether they're business, primary employer trips, and people that we're trying to bring here for jobs, then, wow, we're going to have a really hard time at the state level, and certainly on a national level. And so, it is true that it was not always just an automatic. It was not something that was happening. We were not able to meet with the Mayor's Office. We were not able to meet consistently with City Council. And now, we are doing that, and we're doing it regularly. And it's been going on for some time now, the relationship between the Board of County Commissioners and Colorado Springs City Council, and City Councils of other municipalities within our county. Those meetings are happening regularly. We are picking up the phone and saying, wow, we've got this opportunity. And we think that we could put an intergovernmental agreement together to do this, this, and this, and we sit down and we actually talk about it. Now, we argue about it sometimes, too. I mean, don't get me wrong, there are things that we disagree with, and we pound it out, and we sit around the table, and we discuss it. And that's the way it's supposed to be. So, I cannot emphasize enough how important it is that we have this relationship going on, and especially right now, that we have the relationship with the Mayor's Office that we have. I know that the City Council and the Mayor's Office relationship is just extraordinary right now, as it should be, and that we are so excited. County Administrator Henry Yankowski and I meet with the Mayor and Chief of Staff Jeff Green regularly. Again, we talk about things, we agree on a lot of things, and we talk about the things we don't agree with, and we hammer it out, and it's fantastic. It's exactly the way, I think, my constituents want us to be doing this, and would expect of us. And here's why, obviously. We're both local government. We're two different kinds of local government, home rule charter, and then a statutory county. But we deliver a lot of similar services. And in the county's case, we deliver all of the Department of Human Services, we deliver public health, we deliver all of the services through the District Attorney's Office for prosecution, we deliver all of the services through the Sheriff's Office in terms of detention in our jail facility. It means wherever you get arrested in El Paso County, whether you're in Calhan or Colorado Springs, or wherever you are, you're going to the county lockup. All of those things that the county delivers, we are delivering to citizens throughout the county, regardless of what city they may live in. We have to have that kind of relationship with those cities, and understand what their needs are, and they understand what our needs are as we're serving those citizens in those required services that we have and that we deliver. And then, conversely, as the city is going through policy matters and economic development matters, and they need information or partnership outside their boundaries, we need to be right there, and listen to what their proposals are, and figure out how, if, we can make those kinds of agreements happen. And that's true whether it's road projects, I think back several years to Woodman, to the Woodman Road expansion. We're talking about county, state, federal dollars oftentimes, and that's true of the major road projects that you see. Those are mutual agencies coming together, throwing money from different buckets into one big bucket to build those kinds of projects. Cimarron Interchange is a perfect example that's going on right now. Those relationships have to occur. And so, it is very, very important that we are talking. And now, like I've never seen in my time here on the Board, and I've lived in this, in the city for over 30 years, and I've certainly never seen this kind of collaboration. So, it's a very exciting time. There are a lot of projects on the table, some of which we may have questions about, some of which other people will bring up, and I'll let them do that. I do want to just say that we have had some pretty extraordinary economic growth. It's not, you know, it's not a rocket ship, but it's really doing very, very well. We're seeing increase in sales tax revenues, pretty significant. I think our increase last year was 6.75 roughly, close to 7% increase in sales tax. That's an indicator, obviously, of some good things happening in the community. We're seeing increase in commercial construction, $2.2 billion, I believe, is the number, in construction overall in El Paso County last year, and something, I've got a lot of, I'm not going to read through all the numbers, because I'm going to hand the mic off, but $400 million in new commercial coming out of the ground in this county. We have significant projects on tap in Colorado Springs and in other municipalities and unincorporated El Paso County. These matter because they're going to bring jobs. And what I will close with fundamentally, is that when we sit in our roles as local government and all the different things that we do, we must recognize from a business perspective, when we're talking about business, that the common denominator that all business has to go through is local government, whether it's in this building, regional building, and permitting, whether it's land use, planning, those kinds of things, whether small, you know, residential, or whether large commercial developments, they have to go through local government to some degree. And if we can't get that right, we cost them money. And if we cost them money, we cost them jobs. And if we're costing them money and jobs, and they're not here now, they may not come here. And when we look to woo primary employers to come into this community, because they're the ones who create the jobs, not us, we just create the environment for them to do business, we need to make sure that we are being consistent, that they can be, that they can rely on the process and the timing, and that they can get through the process in order to open their doors, take whatever risks they're taking to set up shop and hire people. Fundamentally, that's a common denominator that we have to get right. That matters to us, and it's something we take very seriously. We're sitting in a building where so much of that takes place, and it just cannot be lost how important it is to business, and then, obviously, as a result of that, to families and individuals for jobs. And so, that's why we work together, and that's why we try to get policy right, and we're very excited about where things are going. And so, let's just open it up to whomever would like to jump in with anything that you're working on, comments that you'd like to share. At a certain point, we're going to stop, and we'll open it up for questions. And I did forget, we do have one more participant on the panel. We have a two-minute introduction by one more Commissioner, but let's go ahead and have some comments first, and then we'll jump to that here shortly.
Amy, I have a request.
Yes, sir.
As you know, the county has a very large budget, the city has a very large budget, but the largest budget is Colorado Springs Utilities. Could we ask Andy to say what's happening in Utilities?
Absolutely. You just got led into what you're going to comment on.
The power is running. Okay, yeah, okay. We got a lot, yeah, the lights are on, water's flowing. We got a lot of stuff going on in Utilities, and one of the things we're really working on right now is reviewing the governance model and how we do that. We had, we're doing monthly meetings, we did that today, this morning, and we're progressing on through there and taking a look at how that's structured, and how it's set up, and maybe, and I will not say that we will, but I will say maybe, that we would come to the voters next April, possibly with a proposed change to split the Board, or maybe not. That's one of the things we're just kind of studying. So, I invite you all to pay attention to that. That will have an impact on how that is done. That is close to a billion-dollar budget that comes in there that runs in and out, and that's quite a lot of effort. We're trying to do a lot of long-range planning and taking a look at the resources needed for both water, power, gas, wastewater, taking a look at all of that, and looking out 20, 30, even 50 years in the case of water, and what the requirements should be, and trying to plan out is exactly when you need to add capacity or not. And that's an ongoing effort. I'll add one other little item. You kind of ran through an awful lot, both over there, but one thing you didn't mention was the airport. We have a commercial and air and optical zone, and that is, you know, we had a lot of hopes for that. We anticipated, you know, in the first year, we might get initial 200 jobs. I think we missed that by an order of magnitude. It's booming, and we're getting a lot of stuff coming in. We're getting a lot of aviation, we're getting a lot of aviation manufacturing, and that is really, really looking promising, and there's more and more things coming up all the time. So, I won't take too much time, I want to get to y'all, so I'll stop there.
Please, go ahead. All right. Didn't know if you were going in a certain order. So, Peggy Littleton, again, County Commissioner, District Five. One of my passions that I've been working on for quite some time, and have had quite a bit of experience in, unfortunately, here in our community, is emergency preparedness, ensuring that citizens are personally prepared, because they are the first responders to every incident that there is. You're the first one to show up to an accident, you're the first one to encounter a fire or a flood, and to ensure that you are well-prepared. I also had the opportunity of representing CCI, which is Colorado Counties Inc., all 64 counties, on the Governor's Homeland Security Advisory Council, working on the strategic plan for homeland security for the state of Colorado. My goal there was to ensure that they do their job with FEMA and homeland security, but that we make sure that we keep response and local, that the federal government and the state government wouldn't come in and try to usurp the authority that we have as a city and as a county. Because as we all know, you know, as our fellow Commissioners know, and citizen, and our colleagues on the City Council, we've experienced Waldo Canyon, Black Forest Fire, and flooding here. And it is, while people respond to it initially, and the state government comes in, and homeland security comes in, and FEMA comes in, after the disaster, many of them leave for the years and decades of recovery. And if any of you have had the misfortune of having lost a home in fire or flooding, my condolences go out to you. We had the opportunity to put together a mentoring group, which is a Waldo Canyon mentoring group, that really mentored and helped the people in the Black Forest Fire through what they had to do and where they had to head to get their ducks in a row to recover much more quickly than the Waldo Canyon folks did. And it was really phenomenal for them to come share their stories and their experience with the folks from the Black Forest Fire, and for the flood victims. Also, up until this last week, I was the liaison from our Board of County Commissioners to the Military Affairs Chamber, working with the military here in our community. And apparently, they have a rule, you can't be on the Military Affairs Council if you're a candidate for US Senate. So, I had to step down this last week, and I think Commissioner Heisey has taken over for me in that role. So, I thank him. for me in that role, so I thank him for that. But it's really important to be out there and have that connection with our military, have your, have our finger on the pulse of what's going on as far as briefings, how we can ensure that they are going to be, and I don't want to say BRAC-proof, but that we are going to protect the economics that are provided because of having our military and our military partners here in El Paso County. So those are a couple of the things about which I'm passionate, and unlike, unlike MERV, I'm not a politician, so I won't speak long, I'll just be a public servant, so.
Yeah, I'll just, same thing, briefly hit on some of the things that I'm involved with. I won't go into too much detail, and then I'll, you know, I'll leave it open for questions and answers. One of the ways that council operates, we have all these committees and subcommittees or associations that we worked on, those are signed out by Council President, which is MERV. Some we get to volunteer for, some we're voluntoad, as it's talked about to be on. And one of those ones that I got voluntoad by MERV is he requires me now to go out regularly and inspect both Patty Jewett and Valley High Golf Courses.
It's a heavy burden for you, isn't it?
In all seriousness, one of the ones I was on, but stepped aside on, was I was one of the two council reps to the Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee. And the first, I was on that for the first two years, and one of the feedback was, is of course, we all knew at that time, when you Google Colorado Springs, negative newspaper articles came up, and they really looked at us, and they, the challenge was, how do we know which part of the city is asking this request? And so what we have done under Mayor Southers is I, I gave up my seat very willingly and gave it over to the Chief of Staff. And so now, when, when we go to Denver, both the executive branch and the legislative branch goes up together, so they know we are talking with one voice. Just like Monday, when we went down to see the Pueblo folks, it was both the mayor, the president of council, and the president of Utility Board goes down there. So, and it's just, you know, showing that how much this city has just changed in the last six or seven months. And I think, you know, we can see it, we can feel it, and it's interesting. We feel the survive, and we see, feel this moving out. One of those areas moving out, as the governor announced, was the cyber center that go up at UCC campus, which is in District 1. And so, so, two years ago, when I was first on, Mayor Bach identified North Nevada as one of the economic zones that we need to concentrate on. We did a study on that, and so now we're going to be dusting that off and relooking at it on how, what we can do to help out the UCCS to bring businesses into that corridor and revitalize it, that hopefully are connected with the cyber center. Let's see, other areas, I, of course, led the moratorium, sponsored the bills that put the moratorium on both the marijuana social clubs and the marijuana, medical marijuana, as MERV said. The Medical Marijuana Task Force is being led by Larry Bagley. I'm working with staff on writing the, or drafting ordinances, because we didn't have any at all, on marijuana clubs. And that'll be coming to council about a month from now for initial work session, and then the votes, two votes will be in March, because that moratorium expires on March 21st. The code review, MERV already talked about that we're doing with the executive branch, I'm one of the three people on there. I'm also Chair of the Budget Committee on the city side and the Finance Committee on utility side, and kind of volunteered for that. I have had over 20 years' experience with government budgets, and so I lead that. Working with governance, as Andy said, on CSU, in fact, just got voluntoad for a committee this morning on that one. With the Regional Business Alliance, they have three separate committees themselves, and I'm the council rep to the military one. So again, getting ready for the BRAC, not only making sure we're BRAC-proof to keep Carson strong, but I think there's a lot of potential for growth out there on the Air Force side, opportunities where other bases might be closing down. We won't say any names, but Los Angeles Air Force Base might just be an example to go You know, yesterday on council, we had our first vote on relaxing our panhandling rules due to both Colorado Supreme Court and then a Colorado, I mean, a U.S. Supreme Court ruling, and then a Colorado Federal Court ruling. We have had to relax a lot of our panhandling, but we turned around and tasked the city attorney to, okay, you swung the pendulum this way, now let's find what is good common ground. And so they'll be going off on that, and while we don't have a task force or committee on that, that's something I'm going to be keeping a very strong eye on, on how we can ensure that when our people, you know, leave work and walk into a parking garage, or get on a city bus, that they're not having to be in a captured environment and can't get away from somebody that's trying to solicit money from them. And then finally, like Peggy, Andy and I are reps to our Emergency Management Center. Fortunately, we haven't had to stand that up for a while, so good luck on that, but, so when that hap, yeah. But if and when we have to stand up again, the communications with the rep will be the people to go to the policy meetings and bring the back representation, or the communication back to rest of council.
Just a few quick things. Lest you think that the city and the county have been butting heads for 40 years or 400 years, or however old this, this city is, you're, you're sitting in a building that's jointly owned by the city, the county, and regional building. So, you know, collaboration has happened in the past. Mark Shuffle Road, which I'm proud to say is now under construction, is, is the last of the RTA's first RTA. It's not phrased quite properly, but, but that was a collaboration that came about, who knows when they started talking about it? The voters voted on it in 2005, and, and we had to have everybody on board before we went to the voters. So there, there's been a lot of collaboration, and, and even, even when the politicos are making headlines in the wrong direction, the staff, they just put their head down, keep working, they talk to folks on the other side. When I'm ready to get all spun up over something on, on Mark Shuffle, because about 60% of that, it's a county project, but about 60% of the length of it is actually in the city. Jennifer Irvine, back there in the, in the corner with our engineering staff, she'll do the, no, no, just vote for this, everybody's giving as much as they can, and so I, I did. And it worked well. Good, good advice from, from Jennifer. So there, there's more going on behind the scenes than what sometimes you might, you might see in, in the papers. Stormwater's been a passion of mine. I am, am on and was the first Chair of the Fountain Creek Stormwater Control in Greenway District, Stormwater Flood Control in Greenway District, there we go. That forms an acronym that means nothing, nothing. And we are, we are perilously close to, to receiving some money from, from Utilities, CSU, through a 1041 agreement with Pueblo County, that will allow us to start doing some meaningful work on the creek. And living in Fountain, I consider myself a downstream guy, so everything, you hear about stormwater and, and the creek and flooding, and, you know, that, that's not to benefit somebody in another county, that benefits your neighbors, it benefits you, actually, you're downstream of somebody. So, so that's a benefit to all, and, and in fact, we are actually working on buying, hopefully, we're submitting a grant that we think we have a good chance of getting to, to buy out a low-income mobile home park that has already lost one row of, of mobile home spaces to the creek and continues to erode. And we, we hope to make that a win-win for the residents in that park, and that would be open space forever, right along the creek there, if we're able to do that. So, just kind of some of the many things that, that we have going on, and has been touched on before, BRAC. You don't wait until they announce a BRAC to say, well, if you don't BRAC us, or if you don't reduce us, we promise we'll, we'll start doing something else. As, as Councilmember Knight said, they're, they're working on it now, and the county has, has agreed to open and should be open, this is, what, the end of January? Probably within two months, we should have a DMV office open on, on Fort Carson. We believe it's, it's the first one in the nation, maybe second. Pentagon has something there from the state of Maryland, but that doesn't make anything BRAC-proof, but it does check a box. And those boxes become important when they start looking at the number of checks. So, there are things that we work on all the time as we look towards the future, and sometimes we have to react to what, what circumstances dictate, but, but our real goal and our real value is when we look towards the future.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, we do have a quick message, so if we're, do you want to introduce the message?
Yes. Before we do the quick video that we asked Commissioner Clark to do, I would ask you, based on the little bit of information they gave you, if you could formulate a question, if you have one, the young man in the back in the brown coat that's, doesn't know what he's looking at, if you'd go back there with him, he'll get you situated so that we can run questions in an orderly fashion. When you come to do your question, we'd ask that you would give your name, state the question, and I'm not putting a time limit on it per se, but we want to get everybody in that we can. Towards the end, if we're running tight, we'll have question cards you can pass out, leave your information, and we'll get those of the pertinent people and get you an answer later. But at this time, if you do your questions, and go ahead and run Commissioner Clark's video, if you would please.
Welcome to our town hall meeting for El Paso County. Thank you for taking an active role in your county government. I'm Commissioner Sally Clark, and I'm also President of National Association of Counties, also known as NACO. NACO represents 3,069 counties nationwide, and as President this year, I'm able to carry our message to counties around the United States and to Washington, D.C. at our nation's capital, to talk about issues that are relevant to county government. Next week, I'll be in D.C. talking at the National Press Club and discussing issues with businesspeople on what the top priorities are for counties across the nation. I'll be joined by city officials as well, and state officials, who will be discussing all of our priorities at the national level. This week, I'll be heading to Salt Lake County, and we'll be talking about the Healthy Counties Initiative. And some of the items on the agenda this week, for me, will be criminal justice and criminal justice reform. It will function as a forum for us to talk about the adults and older adults, as well as early childhood development, public health issues, and mental illness in our jails, which is definitely something that we're all concerned about here, especially when you consider we spend $70 billion a year, from the county's perspective, nationwide, on criminal justice issues. A tour of the Veterans Affairs Facility there in Salt Lake County, to see what they're doing to help their veterans and their military service members. So I just wanted to say thank you again. I wanted to let you know that even though I'm not here with you tonight at the town meeting, that I am working on behalf of El Paso County, and I really am appreciative of my fellow commissioners, City Council members, if they're able to attend, and especially you for attending tonight, because really, stronger counties make for a stronger America.
So appreciate that. Appreciate that our Citizens Outreach Group, including Commissioner Clark on that. She does travel a lot as the National Association of Counties President, and I think one of the things that brings it home more than anything, in terms of having local representation on a national organization like that, one issue that she's been working on, and we all have been working on in a significant way, is the Waters of the U.S. issue, and this is where the federal government really wants to, in a nutshell, any navigable waterway that exists, it's navigable because you think you could navigate it. Well, now, the federal government says that not only regulating navigable, navigable waterways is, should be a job of the EPA, but navigable will now mean ditches and swales, and really, anywhere water will pool. And so if you think about that for a moment, as it relates to private property rights and what the impacts could be, if the EPA has to get involved in any kind of issue related to their new definition of a navigable waterway, it's pretty devastating to property rights and to development, you know, across the board. So that's just one example of having representation in Washington, D.C., fighting and, and working on those kinds of issues. Please, Andy.
That issue will impact utilities tremendously.
It will.
If they come all the way. We have lots of fun dealing with water law as it is, and the potential impact that that could have on how we manage the water flows and, and so forth, could be potentially devastating. It's not something we take lightly. So I think we had a unified front to oppose these, but still working on it.
We've got to hit it hard.
Commissioner Lathan was so correct, I don't know that this microphone's working now again, but Commissioner Lathan was so correct in bringing this up, it was a really good point. And this even impacts how we do retention ponds here for fire mitigation purposes. And so whenever we build a retention pond, if that water comes down and it's in the retention pond, instead of going and flowing down and wiping out Manitou or Cascade, that's considered a taking as well. And so that, it totally does not make sense for any portion of local government.
Okay, if we could start questions at this time. If you would present your question to an individual up here, to the group, just let them know, and as far as the group, we'd like you to discuss it, if necessary. If it's just a one-person question, we'll do that.
We can huddle?
You can huddle.
Okay, all right.
And we, we want to include Mr. Yankowski there.
Yeah, you're, I'll put you on.
Okay. First question, please.
Okay, this one is for the county. With the appeals process in place, why cannot more land use issues be decided by staff rather than sending all land use issues to the Board of County Commissioners?
Well, I guess, I mean, any one of us can jump in. I'll jump in first, just to say, not all land use issues go to the Board of County Commissioners. By law, certain land use issues must go through Planning Commission and then the Board of County Commissioners, that's not within our discretion. And so not all land use issues come through us. In fact, we have increased administrative approvals over the last several years pretty dramatically, with what our staff can approve, which reduces time and reduces cost for applicants. Henry, do you want to add anything on that?
I just wanted to add that we are going to come back to the county commission with some more adjustments in that policy of administrative approvals as well.
Dennis, or Peggy?
Sure. I did speak to our, our Executive Director of Development Services yesterday, and he was kind of letting me know what Henry just said, you know, we have some things coming back, he has some ideas that would speed the process and, and make it cheaper for the applicant. However, next to the budget, land use is probably the most important thing we do. So I'm hesitant to, to turn that over completely, and I realize the question wasn't completely, but, but it's something I would want to watch fairly closely as to what we were, were turning over for administrative approval.
If I could kind of add to that question, how does your decisions on land use influence what happens with the city? Is there any impacts in what you do with their planning?
Well, from a planning perspective, I mean, it's jurisdictional, so.
I understand that, yes.
Right, so somebody, depending on where the land is, if they have to apply for some sort of a land use permit, a variety of those, it goes into the jurisdiction, of course, where the land is, but it certainly has policy implications. Some things, there, there's no precedent argument in land use, although it always comes up, and it can certainly create different issues. But there are planning issues that are, that have a relationship to projects that do cross jurisdictional lines, and in some cases, we have some projects that actually cross jurisdictional lines. So you have to keep that in mind as we go through these kinds of things. And I would note to what Commissioner Heisey mentioned, in addition to, you don't want to just hand over all of that. If you hand over all land use to staff for administrative approvals, the public now does not have a forum to does not have a forum to come in front of their elected officials and state their case, because it is a quasi-judicial process, as to either for or against any particular application on land use, and of course, they run the gamut. So you don't want to put that all in administrative hands, because you take, you then take the voice of the people away from that. Merv, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, no, I, I think you've, what you've described is also very similar in the city, in that we do, as the legislative body for the city of Colorado Springs, when we went through the governance change, one of our primary responsibilities is land use, and, and we take that very, very seriously. Now, we, we also have planning staff and that, that address that, we have Planning Commission that addresses that, but we do accept the appeals. We had one that went two or three hours last night on, on a land use appeal. The three of us are shaking our heads because it, I didn't get home until nearly nine o'clock because of that. But, but, but it, it was something that was very critical, and we had, we had to look at it very closely. We take that very serious. One of the things that we're doing in Colorado Springs is that we just finished a process because Colorado Springs, and over the past decades, have participated in greenfield development, and where, you know, going towards Kansas, you know, there's just a lot of ground out there. But anytime you build out there on, on that ground, it might be cheaper to do that, but look at the infrastructure you're having to expand, look at the roads that you're going to have to maintain, which we're, we're addressing now, and, and issues of that nature. So Mr. Pico, and I think it was Ms. Gabler that worked with you, isn't that correct?
On infill, yeah.
Major discussion regarding infill, because looking internally at how we use the land that's already inside the city limits, that does not expand our infrastructure is, is important. That's just been, that has just been finished, I don't believe it's come, it hasn't come to council yet, but.
Finish is a little strong.
Okay.
But I think we've had our last meeting and it is coming soon, and then we're going to have that open process before we really finalize it and have any kind of vote. We're still, I think, a month away from that. But the infill process has been very, very important, because as I say, it leverages the infrastructure that we have and, and kind of keeps those costs to the city and basically all of the taxpayers down. I'd like to take the opportunity just to also mention another land use thing, which is the Joint Use, Land Use Study, which is, we're doing that in conjunction with Defense Department, and that is multiple jurisdictions, including multiple counties. We're looking at the land, or the military impacts to civilian, trying to look at that, all of that stuff, and that's a huge area of study, which will be going on for about the next 18 months. And has potential impacts feeding into the BRAC, it's not directly linked to it, but could potentially.
And, and Andy, thanks for.
Don't want to take that too much.
No, but thanks for mentioning that. And the other thing that's important for, for everybody to understand is that we are starting a process on a, on a new comprehensive plan, which has not been done in the last 15 years in Colorado Springs. That's critical to us as we move forward, because a lot of things have changed, we've grown, our infrastructure has decayed. That comprehensive plan is critical to us, and we're in the process of starting that and, and working forward in that as well. So we are a home-rule city, so what happens in the county doesn't mean we have to do that, but we have found that if we work closely together, I'm going to use another example, same example I used before, the West Colorado Corridor is actually in the county. When it's done, the anticipation of that, it'll be annexed into the city. Well, it would be to our advantage to do this together, because it's going to affect you, it's going to affect us, and Mayor, I still call you Mayor, it is definitely going to have a huge impact on our friends in Manitou. And, and so we're doing it with Manitou. And, and so that's, you can see the significance of why this, this partnership approach. First, we called it a collaborative approach, but the mayor said, "Let's use the term partnership", because that's, that's a stronger word, and I, I believe that's where it's at, and we won't always agree, but we will always sit down and work out our differences.
With that, I agree. You almost said, "What happens in the county stays in the county." That was, you were right on the edge of that. I, I thought I heard that.
I wish I'd have thought of that.
And, and you know, this, this land use issue, it's critically important. Again, it goes back to what I was talking about earlier, everybody goes through local government to some degree when they set up business or when they're, they're using their land. And so some of the things that we're doing, the Joint Land Use Study Committee, is that the way we're, it's the Joint Land Use Study Committee, I think. Commissioner Glenn was just appointed as liaison to that from the county, and so we'll all be looking at that, but things is simple in terms of the process as electronic submittals. In this day and age, you wouldn't think that we'd even be talking about that, but frankly, that's something that'll be kind of new, where we are, we've got a, a new director and we're looking at making sure that folks can, can submit things electronically much easier than they were able to do before. Planning issues that do cross jurisdictional lines so that there is consistency, so that people don't have to figure out, "Well, my goodness, let me see, if I'm unincorporated, it'll, I'll have to do this, if I'm in the city, I'll have to do this." Trying to get some synergy together and recognizing that we are two different entities with, with two different authorities, but again, similar services. So we're looking at all of those things, we've done extraordinary work. Commissioner Heisey and I started years ago with the, then the Chamber of Commerce, with the Barriers to Business Group, a group of citizens, stakeholders, to look through our land development code and start digging things out, and we have made over 300 changes to that process and policy in order to make things more streamlined and more efficient. So, boy, land use is a big, big matter, and it has an impact.
Thank you. And that reminds me of something that I learned from Dave Rose, not everyone lives in the city of Colorado Springs, but we all live in the county, so.
Right, that's right.
But, next question, please. If you'd state your name and address your question, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Jacobs. I'm, I reside in the county, and like many, or probably most people here, I strongly support freedom, private property rights, and small, fiscally small, accountable government. I've spoken with several of my representatives on the diocese over, over the last period of time about bad outcomes and poor customer experience with county and city services. But tonight, I'm, I'm here to, to focus and ask why, to state that county government isn't, isn't working to assure public safety when it comes to county roads complying with fire code. Burnable fuels in the right-of-ways have not been mitigated, and dozens of turnarounds are not adequately maintained. I wonder what county government learned from the Black Forest Fire, and what steps are being taken to mitigate for the next fire? When will county roads be maintained to meet current fire standards? A second question, since I'm here and able to address both city and, and county representatives, is Black Forest Road. When is that going to be connected at the south end? I would guess that all of you know that you've got six lanes of pavement that are separated by a few thousand yards, maybe a thousand yards, that would serve the, the people on the south end going to the high school there at Vista Ridge a lot to be able to get up to Woodman Road, and, and I'm just wondering what the, I haven't, I've asked in, in all kinds of forums, how, what, what the process and timetable for that is. I don't think it's a tremendously expensive project, it's just something that affects hundreds, maybe a thousand families?
Thanks. On the, go ahead, Andy.
On the connection, I know that's coming up soon, but I don't recall exactly what the schedule is, but it is going through, I think we, we have done some realignment in that area, but I'd have to double-check and get back to you on exactly when. I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head. You absolutely can. In fact, I'm going to, you know, punch a question off here in just a minute, but I won't get the answer back tonight. But I do know that we have that plan, we just realigned some of the roads that it's going to connect to, and then, but it's soon, but unfortunately, I can't put a date on what soon means.
And I'll, I'll just kind of, Jim Reed is in the back, and, and Jim, I might, I might tap you for anything that you might have on Black Forest, but let me start at the top, in terms of burnable fuels and rights of way, we have mitigated, we have mitigated extraordinary amounts of fuels in our rights of way, and it's been an interesting battle over the years. In some cases, people don't want us to mitigate those, and in some cases, they do, and of course, we've gone through a significant process, and Henry, maybe you want to speak to that, any one of the commissioners. We do have a few circumstances of various characteristics of county roads, where we don't, we have one ingress or we don't have a cul-de-sac turnaround for some developments, but we certainly have standards to fire codes, and we've looked into that. Since you sent a message, we've, we've looked at what we have in the county. So Henry, would you like to touch on any of those, or do you want to have Jim touch the Black Forest Road issue? And you have a microphone, Jim?
I do.
Okay.
So as far as the, the mitigation, if you recall, when we tried to mitigate in Black Forest, the, the amount of uproar that we received from the constituents was just amazing. They didn't want us to cut their trees, and as a result, delayed our project almost 90 days, to where we finally were able to get into our right-of-ways, because we tried to listen to everybody and work with them. We finally got into our right-of-ways, included what we could, but you're talking over $5 million worth of work, just in Black Forest alone.
I'm sure there's a lot more than that.
There is, there is a lot more than that, and we have a restricted, we have so much money that we can work with, and we do the best we can with what we have. Now, are you referring to your cul-de-sac, is that what you're referring to? Is that where you're going with this?
There are dozens of cul-de-sacs, just like that.
Right.
So of course, of course, I'm most interested in, in the, in the one that's next door, but it's generally, it's a generalized problem, or I wouldn't, I wouldn't speak in a public forum about my own personal problem.
Right, right.
But there are, there are dozens of them, Jim, I'm sure you know that.
I do. And I know that a lot of them need work, but once again, we have what we have and we do the best we can with what we have.
We've talked about how that hasn't been our personal experience.
That's correct.
But I think it's generalized, and, and the fire chiefs that I've spoken with are, are quite concerned that they don't have adequate turnarounds and that there's so much burnable fuel in the right-of-ways that they need to use to fight fires, and in the case of a big, big fire, it seems like the only, the only significant mitigation that occurred has occurred because of the fire itself.
For ingress and egress, but however, what you don't see in Black Forest is Highway 115. When I was, Highway 115, when I was the county fire marshal a few years ago, we spent several, several hundred thousand dollars clearing ingress and egress routes for Highway 115. When we can get grants, which we were asked for all the time, and when we work on wildfire protection plans, we do the best we can with what we have. I can't hit them all at once. Which fire chief had you talked to by chance? Can you tell me?
Brian, Brian Jack at Black Forest Fire Department, of course, and, and the Falcon Fire Chief, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name.
Trent Harwood.
Met him, yeah.
Trent Harwood, yeah. And neither one of those gentlemen have come to me with that concern.
And I would just, I want to go ahead and bring it up to the, to the panel, and Commissioner Heisey?
I was on the Planning Commission prior to becoming the county commissioner, so I've, I've seen land use for quite some time now. However, this county is, is older than the state of Colorado. I can tell you that now, we don't approve a subdivision, that includes a rural subdivision of less than 35-acre tracts, because those still don't have to come to the, the county if they're larger than 35-acre tracts, but we don't approve it without a sign-off from the fire chief of the, your respective district saying, "Yes, this roadway works, yes, this grade works, yes, this, this cul-de-sac works big enough for our trucks to turn around." However, you know, that only goes back so far, and, and as I started, the, the county is older than, than the state of Colorado, so there are probably many, many historic, historic, meaning, you know, well before my time, roads out there that, that were put in place before the subdivision process came about in the early 70s.
So what I want to do is, if there's something specific with your land use application that you'd like to talk with, we can make sure that you get with, with the director and with Jim, and, and talk about that.
There's a process for that. Thank you.
With the specifics of, of your particular issue. Anything else to add? Commissioner Littleton or Henry? Okay, all right, next question.
And as you ask your questions and you talk back, please speak into the mic. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Stan Vandeworf, and I'm an El Paso County citizen and also resident of the great city of Colorado Springs. I have a question for you, and it revolves around, you know, economic development. This is something very, very important to me, it's where I commit my volunteer time to the community. And you know, the best way to grow the economy is to help the companies that are here now to grow, because the more of that you do, the word gets out to the rest of the country that this area is a place to move my, my company to. So my question is about, there's, there's really some great good news that's been happening recently, I think you're all well aware of it, where we've got great economic growth and so forth, and we have some specific initiatives that have actually been able to go forward, but I wanted to go to the next step. So things like the next things in infrastructure, or maybe the next thing in tax incentives, and this is for companies in the community today, or maybe an initiative that we're going to do regarding faster permitting this year in 2016. And then, you know, the economic zone at the airport, what a great, what looks like a great success story, I think that's awesome. By the way, Councilman Knight, for the Bringing Los Angeles Air Force Space to Colorado Springs, I fully and totally endorse that, just so you know. But you know, that, that zone at the airport is delivering. So I'm interested in what are the next steps the city council and the county commissioners are going to do in these areas of infrastructure improvement, tax incentives, maybe more economic zones, things like that. Thank you very much.
Let's let Dawn start, and I'll have a few comments, too.
Well, let me address the airport economic zone in particular. One of the things I've been pinging Dan Gallagher about, who is the head of our airport enterprise, you know, we have three airports here in town. We got the, the Air Force Academy, we got the one on Fort Carson, and then we got Colorado Springs Airport. And when you have, no, in town. The, when you have, you know, when, when I was a defense contractor and we were looking for a place to bed down, because I was just a small regional office, we wanted to be as close to the customer as possible, and so we always looked something right around Peterson. And, and I think that's true for a lot of companies, and so if you're a company that is providing support to Fort Carson Airfield, was it, no, Briggs.
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 Our bus, I'm sorry.
Bus. Or if you're a, and this is a story I heard, there was somebody, it was either an academy person that has developed a new propulsion system, or somebody that was working propulsion on the academy airfield, but they are locating inside the commercial aeronautical zone out of Colorado Springs Airport and not right by their customer. So it's been such a good success that eventually, my desire is that the whole city be a commercial aeronautical zone, but at least the next step, Dan keeps telling me baby steps, that then we got to put zones around the other two airports so that somebody that comes in that does maintenance on the helicopters or maintenance on the series are not hitting with the tax because they're not located at, up, up by the airport. That's, so that's just one area that I'm looking at.
And, and I want to speak to that as well. The, I'm going to give you an example. About a month ago, we've been working closely, the city council is with the Regional Business Alliance, who has been working at bringing businesses to the Pike's Peak region. We've done that, and it's been done with the county and with the administration, and when we do this. I'm going to give you an example that, that took place a month ago. This was, I can't tell you the name of the company, but it was a Canadian company, and they were looking at coming here, and right now, we are, are their finalist, so it was a good result. But, but what, what happened in that meeting is we told them what we had done with 2C, and they said, "We are shocked. We are shocked that a conservative community like Colorado Springs is willing to reinvest back into itself. That's, that's a, a community that we would like to be a part of." So some of the actions of the citizens have, have helped us. But as Dawn mentioned, the commercial aeronautical zone, when Mr., when Dan brought that up and recommended it to Mayor Bach, he estimated that it would generate about 200 jobs. Mayor Bach told him he was nuts, that it would generate at least 350 jobs. Well, we're at 2,500 jobs. Well, we're at 2,500 jobs and still counting. So, I think they were both underestimating that. And we're continuing to get businesses, like I said, that I just met two weeks ago, the company that's, that's looking at coming into that. The other thing that we're, we're addressing with the support of the mayor and with council is a business personal property tax, to, to address that issue, to, to help with that, because that's, that's a critical issue that we think has far more benefit from a business point of view than it does from the other. One of the, the final thing, and I think Mr. Knight brought this up, three years ago, when Mr. Knight came on, on council, if you Googled, if you were a business owner living in Indianapolis, I'm just picking out a, and you Google Colorado Springs, what you would get is these negative editorials and these negative articles. You don't get that now. You know, the editorial about a month ago, came out referring to council as a highly functional council. I had to read it again. I, but, but the point is, our behavior is starting to define our, our benefits. And we need to continue that and we need to improve on, on every aspect of that. But working closely together with the administration, with the county, with the, with the different business opportunities is very important for us to do that and to model that in a constructive manner. And I think our, our economic person is here, sitting next to you. And as we, as we move forward, he is helping us to coordinate how we, how we do everything. And that, that coordination and collaboration is going to be important for people and jobs that come in. Businesses want to come into an environment that's business friendly and that they know is going to be successful. And we're in, as you mentioned, our job, we can't create the jobs, we can create the environment for the jobs can be created, so.
President Bennett had mentioned Bob Cope. And Bob, maybe some folks don't know exactly the fast track process that the permits can take and the, and your role in that, and maybe the organizations that are involved in that. Do you think you could spend a minute and just tell everybody how you pull everyone together in all, all areas?
Thank you, Henry. I'm Bob Cope, Economic Development Manager for the city. And yes, we do have a formal rapid response program. And Henry knows it very well, is the former head of the Regional Building Department, and that involvement is crucial. Basically, what we do, we have a formal process where if a company's a primary employer or another significant business, or a business that has some unusual circumstances in their scheduling, and it's crucial that we move that project forward, we bring together every agency that will touch either a land use application or a building permit. And we'll expedite both of those processes. So, we will have people from Regional Building at the table, from Colorado Springs Utilities, our staff, our planning staff, our engineering staff. And on occasion, we have hotels, restaurants, that sort of thing, where there's a health department component to it, we have county representation there as well. So, we start off with a coordination meeting where we get the design team and we get the all the reviewing agencies together. They're at one table, they all get to know each other, we exchange all the contact information. As we work through a land use application or a building permit, as typical issues arise, they always will, they knew who the subject matter asked for it is, they met them, they can resolve those easily. If we reach an impasse, then we can bring that group together or a subset of that group back together, and we're going to hammer out a solution in the shortest amount of time possible. And again, this works for land use applications and for building permits. Typically, it reduces the approval time by about 50%. And we've gotten great reaction from our existing companies that are expanding here and new companies that want to locate here.
You know, I've got one other comment. One of the things that, that Councilman Pico and Knight have really emphasized, as we look at dealing with companies that come inside, that come from the outside to come here, that we provide the same benefits to our businesses that are growing right here in Colorado Springs, because they're, they're probably more important to us than anybody looking at us, because they're already our neighbors and they're already our friends. So, we're, we're working, we do take that into close consideration, that we do not provide any incentive or anything for an outside group that we cannot provide from a company that's growing within the Colorado Springs area.
So, you're right. Retention first. We talk about that all the time. Retention then attraction. And they work hand in hand. I think when Bob talks about the speed and the rapid response, I'll never forget the dinner that we had with a, a company that was based in California, was looking at coming out here, sitting around the table with representatives from the city, representatives from the county, the business community, talking to them about what their needs are, and they had a lot of conversations. And one of the things they said was, well, when we were out in California, we had this project, we had our investors all ready to go and we were so excited, and that's really where we've always been and where we wanted to be. But we got to this point where we sat down and with planning and all the agencies there, and they said, you know what? This is great. This is going to be an extraordinary project. I'm, I'm going to tell you, huge project. And they were told, we'll have you up and running with all your permits in about seven years. Seven years? Are you kidding me? I mean, that's the kind of, just, just roadblocks and bureaucracy nightmare that you can experience in California and other places. We don't want to be that. And while there are certain processes that you have to go through, we can, how about, let's, let's give you seven weeks. And, and we even had federal issues we had to work through on that, and, and we were able to put partners at the table and work through some federal issues. Doesn't always necessarily mean that we win, but that's the kind of thing that business looks for. And that's the kind of, that's the kind of crazy range that you can imagine in business, where you can be looking at seven years until you get your approval, and they're excited about it. We'll have you up and running, you'll have your buildings up in seven years. Oh, my gosh, are you kidding? Come out here, we'll get, we're going to make this happen. So, that matters. Again, it goes right back to that. And just to your question about, there are so many different things that we can do together. Counties, as a statutory county, are fairly limited in our economic development tools that were allowed by law. But we are, are very good at intergovernmental agreements, partnerships, any kind of way, ways that we can leverage resources that we may have access to. It hasn't been mentioned here, we won't go into full definitions, but we have tax increment financing. There's been a lot of talk about that. It's used significantly. I've voted against it, I've voted for it. I mean, there are some that are good, some that are bad, and you certainly have to look at all the differences. But tax increment financing is a way to, to move projects forward and to use the, the collective economic, increased economic activity to really benefit projects and, and create more. So, there are a lot of tools that we talk about all the time and we will continue to do.
Yeah, and Amy, I want to, when, when, when we have companies looking to grow in Colorado Springs or looking at relocating Colorado Springs, we get three questions. Can you provide the power? Do you have the water? Can you provide the workforce? And we have an incredible relationship, a working relationship with UCCS, Pike's Peak Community College, at our technical university. They are an asset to our community, because as you know, at UCCS, I use them as an example, Pike's Peak Community College does the same thing. There's been businesses that have come in and said, we need to focus on a specific workforce that we need developed, and they've developed curriculum around that to bring them in here. We're, we're very blessed to have the leadership in those higher education areas that can help us with this. The other, the fourth question they get deals with home building. You know, do we have, do we have a, a place for, for their children to, to live the life that they want in, in the home? So, our relationship with our home builders is very critical to us as well.
Thank you. Okay. Next question, please, and state your name and address who it's to.
Good evening. My name is Dolores Grady, and this question is for the city and the county. How do the city and the county view annexing the county enclaves to the city? Thank you.
Do you want me to start?
Sure.
Okay. Well, the, the enclaves inside the city, we're all, we're all looking at as, as we speak. But several of those enclaves are enclaves for specific reasons. I know some of them have significant drainage problems that, that have to be addressed. And as we start working more on stormwater, that'll get us closer to be able to do that. The, the West Colorado Avenue, where we talked before several times, as we move forward in addressing some of those stormwater issues and the road issues and the utilities issues that need to be addressed there, it will make it easier for those enclaves to be captured and annexed within the city. We're, we're not prepared to, to annex properties that don't make financial sense to the city because it, we're taking it out, that, that's a deficit situation for the city. But we will work closely with, and in partnership, we have partnerships with our fire, we have partnerships with our police on, on those enclaves to serve each other, and, and we'll continue with that. Andy, did you want to share, or Don, do you want to share anything with that?
Yeah, I think, I think there's, there's a lot of interest in that, but there's a lot of cost involved in picking up some of these. And that's been kind of a, kind of a bulk. I mean, if it's going to be too costly to the city compared to what the revenue is to support the infrastructure that has to be extended, then it's rather problematic and, and it'll be difficult to do.
Right.
Some of those, some of those enclaves are, have serious issues in that regard. In others, not so much, but it's a sort of choice of, you know, step one, if the people in the enclave want to be in the city, then they kind of have to get together and say, we want to be there. And really haven't heard that much, except for, you know, one, one particular enclave has kind of expressed that, but haven't heard it from too many others. And of course, that's the one that has the biggest problems with utility issues.
Yeah, that's right.
I think that would probably be my 230 homes that are still in the county that are in the middle of the city. Would that be the one?
That's not the one I was thinking of.
Not the one? Okay. So, I have, actually, there are only 230 homes in my commissioner district that are actually in El Paso County. And it happens to be one of those areas where...
No, they're all in El Paso County.
They're all in El Paso County. That's correct. That are not yet part of the city. Thank you, Commissioner Lathan, for correcting me on that. And, and so, it is. I mean, it's like half the residents want to go on city water and utilities and half of them don't. They like their wells and they want to stay that way. You know, but we do have drainage problems over there, we have difficulty with roads and maintenance and sidewalks in that area as well. So, it's an area that Andy and I get to collaboratively work together with the citizens, so.
They only want things to generate revenue for them. Let's put it this way.
Well, I would jump in.
We want it to at least break even.
County develops them and spends all the money, and then the city annexes them.
I like that plan.
And actually, I'm, I'm not opposed to that, because that means the city gets the ongoing maintenance.
Yeah, the lifecycle cost can be worse than the acquisition cost. I think a classic example is one of the enclaves, biggest enclaves that we have, and I never realized till I got on city council, is on the northeast corner of Academy in Austin Bluff. There are a lot, there's a big enclave there that is still counting. And since we've been there on council, three years that Andy and I have been, we have come across, oh, probably half a dozen applications, maybe, maybe not quite that much, of people that, for, their septic system has gone bad and it's cheaper for them to connect to Colorado Springs water supply than it is to redo their septic tank. So, they come in to us from the, from Colorado Springs Utility side, requesting permission to connect to our, our system. And I can't remember if, if we vote on that as a council or as a, I think as a council, even though it's a utilities. Included in there, that agreement is a clause that says, the city reserves the right to annex them at any future date at, at our desire. And so, they, they can no longer, no longer do we have to ask mother, may I? And, and I don't know if we've ever exercised that clause. So, it's, it's not like we're out there trying to aggressively grow and, and bring in and, and get rid of all the enclaves, because we are allowing these people to go to, go to city water system, city sewer system. They, again, like I said, they, they do have to sign that right, but I don't know, I don't think we've ever exercised it.
Is the, is the question driven on any particular enclave? Because there are quite a few of them, actually. No? Just a generic question?
Mike could weigh in.
Do they end up paying city taxes or just...
Could you step up to the mic? Please, thank you.
I just had this quick question. Do they end up paying city taxes or just a sewer fee? Or how does that work, even though they are annexed?
Oh.
Yes.
Yeah. They're, if you are receiving water service from Colorado Springs Utilities and you are not with inside Colorado Springs, you pay an additional 50%. So, it's the base rate that a Colorado Springs residence would be times, times 50%. But no, they don't pay the 8, 8.25 compared to whatever the...
Same goes for wastewater as well.
Commissioner Heisey?
Thank you. Philosophically, I'm opposed to enclaves, but they happen for many reasons. And often, it's, it's because the city develops around an area and the citizens don't want to be annexed, and you respect the, the will of, of the citizens there. They don't make sense from, it's not efficient, the city, you know, dispatch for fire, for police, snow removal, any of the above, you know, they drive through or around an enclave or we drive through the city to, to get to those roads to maintain them. But, but the city, the city's fountain is, is great for this. In fact, they cleaned up a bunch of enclaves here a few years ago. But they hold all the cards. They decide whether they want to, to annex or not. The state legislature has passed a legislation that, that says what I call the polite law, tells the cities they have to let the county know they are going to annex, or they're looking at annexing. It is not something that, that is ever a vote of the Board of County Commissioners.
And to clarify, that was simply a generic question, not specific to any enclave. Thank you.
I would note that Council President Bennett used the word capture. So, the city surrounds and captures the enclave. And the enclave doesn't have anything to say about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I did it on purpose.
Moving on to the next question here.
Good evening. Thanks for putting, putting on this forum. I'm Loheinos Gonzalez. There might be a second part to this, because our questions are similar. But regarding local stormwater issues, which everybody brought up, that include things such as the EPA and the permitting concerns, do you anticipate a regional approach with both city and county funding or more independent improvement in funding efforts to address the storm, stormwater concerns?
Let me start with that. I think there'll be...
I want to be second.
Okay. I think there'll, there'll need to be a combination of both, but right now, the issue rests with the city of Colorado Springs, because of the MS4 permit is, is a potential lawsuit to the city of Colorado Springs, not to the region. So, we need to address the issues that are truly ours and work in partnership with our neighbors as they address theirs. There may be some things that we need to do that, that would be cheaper to do jointly. Once again, the, the Ridge Road area, which is in the county and, but all the water runs off of the city, we need to do that jointly. You know, some of the, some of the downstream area that runs to Pueblo, comes out of, of, what's the stream that, out in Banning Lewis? It comes, it comes in down through Fountain.
Jimmy Camp.
Jimmy Camp Creek. You know, and it drains a huge area. It really never gets into the developed part of Colorado Springs before it hits Fountain. So, so we've got to do some of these jointly together. But as, but we have some unique needs, and when you talk about the backlog, which is about 140 million, and, and critical issues, remember there was, the issues, there was three levels, some, and as Mayor described, a lot of those are wish lists. But there are some critical issues. Those are what we're trying to address right now with the 19 million a year. Those, those are unique to the city of Colorado Springs and it's our responsibility to address those, and that's what we're doing.
I, I was surprised. Commissioner Lathan and I spent quite a bit of time on the failed stormwater initiative that was voted on a few years ago. And, and we had a lot of engineering staff and a lot of people working on it, and we identified projects. And when we got down to identifying the, the city product... to identifying the city projects, county projects, perhaps, Manitou Springs Fountain, and then what really should be joint projects, I was amazed at how few joint projects there were. And I am convinced those can be handled through simple MOUs, IGAs. But it does need to be addressed on a regional basis, because water will flow in and out of the same jurisdiction. However, there really aren't that many projects themselves that would truly be considered joint.
And there's some things that, there's, we've talked about some of the budgeted money, but there's grant money that we can go after. It's to Colorado Springs' benefit, and Mayor, I'm looking at you again, that if Manitou is looking for grant funds to address critical issues to them, it's to Colorado Springs' benefit to support them in doing that. So, we can work in cooperation together. Of the critical issues that we've identified in Colorado Springs, I think, Andy, was there 78 items on that list?
That number rings a bell.
Yeah. And 80% of them have a benefit to Pueblo.
Yeah.
80% of them. So, the joint benefit to each of them. Now, all the water that goes downstream doesn't emanate in Colorado Springs. It doesn't emanate and go through Manitou. It comes through other areas as well. And we need to work collaboratively with all of our partners, all the municipalities, and the county. Because in this last May and June, there is significant water that came in below Fountain. So, we've got to be addressing all of those issues.
Dawn?
Well, Lahenos, as one ex-military guy to another, in our professional military education, we learned the thing of centralized planning, decentralized execution. And I think this is the perfect place to do this, because we do got to plan how we're going to tackle it, so that we do it in a logical manner, you know. And we don't want to be spending 10, $12 million on a project until the upstream source has done their mitigation, so that the next flood, you know, turns around and floats all our concrete down there. We're also seeing that in 2C, between Colorado Springs Utilities and in the city Public Works Department, we have a lot of underground water lines, either more water supply lines than water sewer lines, that are just, the soil is corroding them. And so, we got 20-year-old lines that are in worse shape than we have 100-year-old lines. All depends on what part of town you're in. And so, the last thing we want there is for us to spend 2C tax dollars paving a road, and utilities comes in six months later and dig it back up. So, you've got to have that centralized planning, whether it's stormwater, road repair, or anything else. But the execution should really belong to the municipality or the government that is responsible for gathering the taxes to do it.
And Lahenos, one of the things related to that, that you'd be pleased to hear, is that we've actually purchased a software that's applicable to our neighbors, but certainly with utilities and the planning department, so that when we start planning for those roads under 2C, it tells us, "Hold it. You've got infrastructure under here that has to be addressed." So, there's some benefits to that software in helping us to identify the critical issues that are under there, so we don't dig it up six months later.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. It is something that's near and dear to all of our hearts, because we all were involved in the Stormwater Task Force, the recent effort. And although that initiative itself, in that form, didn't pass, it was based on a regional approach, with each entity doing their own work, pooling the funds, dedicated revenue for individual projects, but recognizing the science of the regional, of the entire region. That's critical. Has to happen. We just, we can't do this within municipal boundaries, because the water doesn't move that way. So, we're working on it. County has MS-4 permits as well. We've all got to get this right.
That's right.
And I just add, it's been so much fun for Merv and I to go down with the mayor and get really beat up in Pueblo.
We've been beaten up down there, too. We get it. We hear your pain.
Next question, please.
That's right. Yes, please.
My name is Dennis Delahoy, and just to dovetail on the question about stormwater, is the question about leadership in that, the leadership roles. Because we know the priorities need to be set. The city will have its priorities, the county will have its priorities. And we know that the ideal way is to start the corrections upstream. You know, the more we take care of the upstream problems, the fewer problems will be flowing in to Colorado Springs and Fountain. So, a leadership role in prioritizing some of those projects, so that they get done in an orderly fashion. And the second part to my question, and Commissioner Littleton talked about it earlier, beyond the agencies that have agreements together to respond to emergencies, what is being done to help to expedite getting resources in to these emergency hazardous situations, say, the problems we had with Black Forest, getting resources in in a timely manner, and not have to go through so much of a process, so that we can actually work with the local city, county, federal, when we start bringing in FEMA, or when we start using the military aircraft and things like that. There are so many resources out there. What are we doing to formalize, like chain of command and resource development, so that, you know, we don't have these delays that just end up costing property and lives?
We have a lot of mutual aid agreements that are set up across multiple agencies, all the way up federal. We have an MOU with Fort Carson, which allowed us to pick up the helicopters right away, so we were dumping that. But then, you're right, there is a very large and cumbersome process to get some of that federal assistance in there. But at the state, local level, county level, you know, and between, it's going very, very well. And we have a, I'm sorry, and we have a program going, and I shudder to say the code word for it, because I cringe every time, because it has a military use, but they call it Broken Arrow, and it's, and I'm trying to remember exactly how that works. It's 30 apparatus within, 30 teams within 90 minutes, anywhere within the, you know, up and down the front range. And we've drilled that a couple of times, and it works pretty well. I've been on a couple of those exercises. But it's great, you know, you put the call out, and you've got every agency up and down, has their equipment in there, and they're in on there, and in on the fire attack. So, it's, at that level, it's working. We still have some ways to go to get the federal people in on top of it. With the exception of Fort Carson, it provides helicopters, it's still a process there. But Congressman Lambourne made a lot of effort to make sure we streamline that process. So, I used to be in NORAD and NORTHCOM for some of those earlier fires. And remember, it took days to get the C-130s, for example, and some of the other federal assets cleared and in on hot. And the last couple of disasters we had, they were on, they were right on the spot, you know, within hours, in some cases. So, it's greatly improved, ways to go yet, and we are still working on it.
And Brett would be, I know Brett wanted to mention, I would consider you a subject matter expert on this question.
Jim and I have worked closely together on a number of responses. I think a couple of things to answer your question. One is, more than ever, we're in constant contact with the military installations. So, we have an emergency management collaborative that meets every few months. It includes all the installations. There's also a law enforcement collaborative. And we constantly talk about mutual aid on a regular basis, because as you know, there is some turnover in the military installations as far as leadership goes. So, we're in touch with them. We're looking for ways to improve any response. I think in the sense of immediate response, we're doing very well, in the sense of how fast they can immediately respond with resources they have available. There's always going to be some federal restrictions. There's always going to be some guidelines that we have to follow, particularly if, in a while, for instance, we re-delegate, it's called an incident management team, and they essentially are in charge of fire suppression. And we can talk offline on that, but there is a few nuances in that process. But I think more than ever, and I think you've seen this, is there is a clear mutual aid agreements. We're in constant communication with the installations around us. And there's also a sense of a statewide response that can come, Councilman Pico referred to how fast, for instance, fire response is in the state. They have initiated kind of an aerial fleet, as it were, in the state for fire response since the Black Forest Fire. So, you're seeing enhanced capability throughout the state of Colorado, including El Paso County. So, I think you're going to see a lot of improvements, continue to see improvements, both in communication and formalized agreements. So, but happy to talk offline as well on that, if you'd like.
Yeah, I wanted to speak to the prioritization of stormwater. You know, when the stormwater was being addressed by our joint group that put it on the ballot, there was an engineering firm that helped identify what the critical issues were. So, that wasn't just my thinking it might be, or as a politician, or something. We had engineers looking at that. CH2M Hill did that. Since that time, we've had some major storm events, like we did in May and June, and we've made some major improvements. We've fixed some things. You can imagine all the work that's happened in Manitou. But we've made some changes. Well, recently, we hired a company called MWH, who's an engineering firm that's done, revised the study. Actually, Pueblo hired Wright Engineering to do the same thing. Believe it or not, 80% of the priorities that they, in Pueblo, that they identified are the same ones that we've identified. So, we've had some verification that those are the critical issues, and we're starting with the top priorities. The first one, which is a major retention drainage area for Sand Creek, is going to go in the ground the first week of February. So, we are not waiting. We're moving forward with this, using the priorities that the engineers have said are critical to our future.
One of the things I think that we are doing well now, too, is looking at between the county, and Jim Reed's here, and his group uses it, and Brett Waters, our military bases and the state, is using a robust communication tool that now everybody can have immediate information via cellphone, via text, phone call, email, and they can disaggregate data to know exactly who has what asset to be able to call to the table immediately. And so, that is something that has changed over the last few years, because it's something that we saw that was really lacking. And I think if you look at any of the reports that are out there from Waldo Canyon or Black Forest Fire, just not a robust enough communication tool that was being utilized by every partner within El Paso County and within the state. And I think that's happening now.
Yeah. I think one thing that is underappreciated and probably underknown is all the great work that Brett has done in emergency management. About two years ago now, Pentagon got this bright idea of a program called Community Partner Initiative, CPI. And then, the 21st Space Wing Commander John Shaw at the time said, "We want to do this," and stepped up. And Andy and I went to the first meeting, as well as a lot of Brett's people went there. And as the Pentagon folks talked about, "Well, have you thought about getting this type of partnership with your city?" "Yeah, we're already doing that." "Have you thought about this?" "Yeah, we're already doing that." You know, the police department's working together, the fire department's working together, the hospitals working together. And so, it was really pretty an easy partnership together, because all we had to do was let the Pentagon know of all these MOUs that we already had. And, but it did grow to not just be Peterson and the city, and the county. All the local bases have signed on to it. In fact, there's an update meeting on Friday morning. But then Brett has taken that even one step further. And I think it was last summer, summer of '14, he did a major exercise called Skyfall, in which we had a passenger airline crash right there on Powers Boulevard. And we had army helicopters, we had the Peterson Fire Department come out. You know, the command post was a joint command post and everything else. So, it's great to have these MOUs. It's more important that we practice it. So, with Brett practicing Skyfall, or the Broken Arrows, or everything else, you know, I think he's done a miraculous job of getting us prepared.
I just want to mention that when you look back in time, and you look at the disasters we've been through, Waldo, Black Forest, the floods, being someone who was in the incident command post Saturday night, Waldo Canyon Fire, sitting around the table with Jerry Marr and everybody around the table, Forest Service and state representatives, and all of the people working on what's happening, what are we going to do, and looking at the Type 1 Incident Team coming on scene. We had an emergency operations plan in place. It was with multiple agencies. We were not in reaction mode. We had a plan, and we began to click off all the parts of that plan. Mutual aid that is contemplated under state law, mutual aid that's contemplated under that, called the EOP, and that was all in place. And even at that time, federal assets that were being discussed, and of course, that's a little bit bigger, and we do struggle with getting those federal assets on scene. We did have, we did have air assets on the fire at 2:00. But the streamlining that's taken place with the air assets with the federal government, and the things that we've learned, both from the implementation of the EOP, and all of the things that begin to click off and happen immediately as it relates to recovery, we've learned a great deal. But we weren't sitting there waiting for a disaster and didn't know what we should be doing. We had that emergency operations plan. And it was very, well, it was extraordinary. There are a lot of adjectives, I guess, you could use to see it all happen. Devastating, just a lot that happens in a situation like that, that I hope we never see again. I hope nobody sees again. But we've got a very vigorous plan with mutual agencies in place. We've learned, we've made it better. We now have an Office of Emergency Management that's doing, that's doing much, much more. We just had a Blizzard, what do we call the Blizzard incident? Deep Freeze, sorry. We just had that whole drill with mutual agencies. We do these things all the time. We contemplated work with the National Guard. They were part of that drill. They were part of, I remember having those conversations that night with, during Waldo. So, these things are in place. They always need to be honed, they always need to be practiced, they always need to get better. But we've had those in place, and we were ready. And frankly, we were able to respond in pretty extraordinary ways because of that.
We'll have one more question.
We've got two more people.
Well, hold it. Before you do, I was informed that their questions are very similar, so
we'll have them both come up together. And before you ask your question, if anyone here has a question that didn't get answered, we've got these cards. The gentleman in the back, and Joan in the red, can give you one. Fill out your name and contact information, your question, and we'll get a response back to you. After their question, President Bennett, if you and Commissioner Lathan would like to close this out with closing comments, please. Your questions now, please.
Hello, my name is Kelvin Dean. I am a member of the Citizen Outreach Group for El Paso County. I'm also a resident of Colorado Springs. And I'd like to start out by giving you guys a very special thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule tonight and coming out and meeting. Having seen some of the deadlock that's existed before within our leadership teams, it does my heart good to see all of you guys sitting here and talking and communicating, and looking for those solutions that's best for our community, not the county, not the city, but for us. Okay? So, Mr. Bennett, as you have worked on the prioritization of these projects, could you give us an update on the status of the Shucks Run project?
I cannot give you an update on that, because I don't have that in front of me. But that's one that I would be glad to get that information and share it with you.
I know it's a big one.
It is a big one.
And if I could add to that, if that's okay, we have an envisioned Shucks Run process going on with a number of stakeholders that's happening. In fact, there was a meeting yesterday on this. We're happy to get back to you on timeline, but that process is moving forward. It's really a pretty amazing process, since there's a number of stakeholders involved in that. So, happy to visit with you more on that offline, and get you a timeline, if that's what you're seeking.
And you know, that is a critical stormwater issue for us, because all of that water, you know, we've talked about a lot of the water coming from outside our city. That comes from completely, that entire drainage is inside the city limits of Colorado Springs. That's our responsibility. We've got to deal with it.
And Shucks Run seems to be kind of a center for a lot of the youth homelessness that we experience in this region, which I think is why Red wanted me to come up, because I, you know, Colorado is booming. 200,000 people in the last two years. We're getting about 10,000 people a month moving- 200,000 people in the last two years, we're getting about 10,000 people a month moving into Colorado, migrating here. And with that's going to be an increase in the transient and homeless populations. And I think we're all experiencing an increase in that as we speak. And I'm wondering specifically, I know the, I've looked at what Mayor Hancock has got some initiatives up in Denver, I think I heard 57 million he's committing towards some type of a solution there. Wondering what the city is doing as far as trying to get a handle on this problem, and specifically, I'd like to know about El Paso County, because it would seem to me that they would be ideally situated to be a lead agency in some type of a regional approach to trying to address things like the lack of affordable and workforce housing, job training. I know there's a lot of programs out there, and I think the county just started this week their point-in-time count on homelessness. So, I was wondering what efforts are underway, and what more we might be able to do.
Well, certainly, when it comes to that, the services that are available, we're working very closely with the Springs Rescue Mission, as they look to expand their services and provide a day center. We need a day center for these people to come and provide productive use. Working closely with the VA. As you know, a lot of our homeless people are retired, or veterans that have been injured, and they need treatment. And we're working with that. Most of that's working through Amy Cox and the mayor's office. And so, I would recommend that, you know Amy very, very well, and she's providing direction for that. But one of the most, the best thing that I'm seeing, is when I came on council, and I brought this to Mayor Box's attention, that, you know, just complaining about it isn't getting us anywhere. We need to find solutions to how we deal with the critical issues. Some of the homeless people are homeless by choice, and some of them are homeless by choice because they can self-medicate. That doesn't mean that there's not issues that we can't address with those, but we've got to address what the true issues are. When I went and met with the different agencies that are providing those services, they were kind of islands to themselves. We now have them talking to each other, so that they can not duplicate services, but can provide services that are compatible and cooperative, and not duplicating at all. And that's taking place right now through Amy's direction.
Let me just add, Mayor, and you probably familiar with this, there's also kind of regional continuum of care process. We've added lay, city and county partners involved in that, and a number of stakeholders are looking for solutions. I think some great things are happening, not only the Springs Rescue Mission, we've increased winter shelter beds dramatically over the last couple of years. And so, I think the long-term solution clearly is working with these partners, and I think there's a tangible one in Springs Rescue Mission, as far as a day center goes. But there is a larger effort with a number of community partners in the continuum of care, kind of task force is happening, and I think a number of partners are there, and I believe city and county representatives are both there as well, so.
One thing they're doing is they're looking at models around the country that are working. You know, you can look and say, "What we're doing isn't achieving the results we want." Who perhaps is getting good results, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel? And to that effort, Phoenix, several folks have been to Phoenix and seen the model they have down there. Be quite expensive to stand up, you know, starting from scratch, but we can take bits and pieces of it and start working it independently and grow into something that is that day model, you know, it's not just to feed them in the morning and send them out, but actually give them incentives to do something else.
Yeah, Dennis, that's a really good point. Mayor Southers just came back from last week, he was with the, all the mayors of the 100 largest cities out in DC. He came back with an aha experience. There's not a single city of those 100 cities that aren't addressing the same issue that we are. So, working together, learning from each other is the way we're going to be able to resolve this. When we were in Pueblo, Andy and I were in Pueblo on, was it Monday?
Monday.
It wasn't just homeless campers, it was communities of homelessness. It's all up and down the front range of Colorado, probably through all the cities of Colorado. But it's a critical issue, and it's not just an issue of the negativity that happens, but these people need some help, and we need to make sure that they get the right help that addresses their future.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you for inviting us to be here. We had several council members who could not be here, because they had prior commitments prior to being here, but the three of us could, and we were honored to be here. I guess, I see, what I would like, hope that you would see is that we feel we have a very bright future in Colorado Springs. If you would have talked to us three or four years ago, I don't know, we would have described our future in such a bright way. But that doesn't mean we don't have things that we need to address that are critical issues. But as I mentioned at the beginning, when we talked to our friends in Pueblo, when we talked to the city council in Denver, we found that we had so much in common that we could learn from each other and we could help each other. Well, every community here in the El Paso County has more commonalities than we have differences. And so, let's focus on those commonalities and to address these, and use that synergy to address these problems, because we had a unique thing happen about a year ago. We were talking about a piece of property up in the mountains, and what the city was going to do with that. And we said, "Well, we have some problems, the county has this idea, we have this idea." We thought, "Well, why don't we do something unique? Why don't we sit around the table and talk about it?" We solved it in 10 minutes. What a unique idea. But the point is, we've found that when we sit down and address the critical issues, we can find solutions. Well, construction defects is a state law issue that we're having problems. What construction defects has done is that it has made it impossible for builders of condominiums and townhomes to be able to do that in a viable manner. In fact, when we did some research, there isn't anyone in the state that doesn't have a lawsuit against them. So, Colorado Springs passed a resolution to address that, but it is going to have to be dealt with on a statewide level. We are hearing from our legislative council that that is an issue that's being addressed. It's not necessarily at the point, I don't believe that we heard, that says it's going to be fixed, but we're moving forward with it to allow that. It has a huge impact on our ability to build affordable housing, because what's happening is these contractors are getting sued over minor issues, and they can't get insurance. So, they go and build single-unit homes. They don't build condominiums or multifamily housing. And it's literally dried up that resource for our community. It's something that has to be addressed. And what we did in Colorado Springs, when we passed the resolution, I think you guys may have addressed, did you address a construction defect? Okay. We said that that doesn't mean that a homeowner of a condominium or townhome can't file lawsuit. It doesn't mean that. But it does mean that the builders have some resource available to them, and so that they can actually get the insurance they need to actually construct the process, construct the buildings, because it has dried, it has had, somebody asked a question about affordable housing. That's a major issue that's dried up our ability to build affordable housing.
And I would note on that, I've had somebody say to me, "Well, they're just the developers. They can afford it." Oh, that is not the way this works. When you have these kinds of issues, whether it's legal issues or regulatory schemes that drive up the costs to the builders or the developers, they just pass that cost along to the consumers, and you drive up the cost of housing, and you drive up the cost of commercial, which drives up the cost of business, which reduces the ability for people to hire people. I mean, there are just all kinds of impacts, so you have to have a balance. And so, this is a serious issue.
It is a very serious issue.
Yeah, it absolutely needs to be dealt with for our community going forward. I just want to, very quickly, as we close, a big thank you to our Citizens Outreach Group. Ed, thank you. Reb, Joan, everybody who's here, Citizens Outreach Group. We appreciate our volunteers so much that tonight we're going to, you asked for a pay raise, so we said that tonight we would take a vote and raise your pay. Our volunteers, there you go, Reb, we're going to double it. You want to double it? All right, okay.
Amy, could we have a mall stand?
Yeah, all of our Citizens Outreach Group members, please stand up, so that we can recognize you. We appreciate you so much. Thank you. I appreciate you hosting this, because we do believe, all of us up here, I know that I can speak for all of us up here, we believe in open, transparent representation. We want to be here to answer questions, we want to hear from constituents. And sometimes it's easier to put all of us, you know, rascally elected officials in a room together and let you ask questions. So, we want to do that, and we appreciate you hosting that. We appreciate all of you taking your time, and everyone up here taking their time. We're just living in this community like all of you, and we're trying to do the right thing for the community and make decisions that will really set us on the right track for the future. So, a lot's been said, and oh my gosh, there are so many things that haven't been said. Henry and I were sitting here talking about, "Well, we should talk about this, and we should talk about this, and we've got this going on."
Maybe we should do this quarterly.
Well, we might do it quarterly. Why not? Let's do it quarterly.
I'm all for it.
I'm great with that, and the problem is, we don't have time, and there are so many things going on right now. Very, very busy. Every time we think it's going to quiet down, it never quiets down. But it's about making sure that we're listening to the constituents, that we're listening to each other, that we're making decisions that use common sense, that's, those are the two magic words to me, and that we continue to move things forward and try to be a support for business and the community, and not an impediment. So, we are working toward that, we always work toward that. We have a ton of issues we didn't even get to, but we're always here. Doors are open, and so, we will do this again, and we will, maybe there are specific topics that people can ask for, but at the end of the day, we just appreciate all of you being involved, and the opportunity to serve and to work together with everybody, so that this region, this entire region, can just be the bomb, right? So that we can go out there and retain the employers that we've got, and support the families that we have, and bring in new employers, and provide the services and the infrastructure that all of you expect. So, again, thanks to COG, and thanks to everyone up here, and well, Happy New Year. It's still January, we can still say that, and we'll see you at the next town hall. Thanks.